Okay, Bonnie, we're going to come, we're out of executive session, go back on the record.
We are on the record.
Fantastic, we're back on the record. Thank you, everyone that stepped outside, we lost. Now we did either, we're up there, but maybe we'll come back. The next item on the agenda is the election of a secretary. I thought we were doing officer elections in total, but Jeremy and Fred seems like we were.
Well, I think that's something, usually what happens is, we do all the offices right after Election Day. In this case, we had the unusual circumstance where the chairman resigned over the summer. Steve was elected chairman, Jennifer vice chairman. What we can do is put all offices on for next week if you want, with the expectation that the whole commission will be here to vote.
Probably do that.
Okay.
I don't care.
Let's do that, we're on for next week.
There's a new commission, you know, I think the new commission should send you the new chairman.
Great, we'll put it out for next week.
Because were you here for that?
Yes.
You were? And you were not.
Okay.
Actually, I was not here, but that was the night we were appointed, so maybe you became chairman first and then you were appointed.
Yes.
So we saw it, but we didn't participate.
So you didn't vote for me?
Right.
There was no indication of a timeframe for those, for those elections that occurred in September. And the commission does not have any bylaws, so.
Of electing officers?
Of electing officers.
We'll put it out for next week, let's just do it next week.
Yeah.
Great, what's next?
Uh, next, adoption of, I like this guy, he's gonna go fast. Adoption of our planning meetings, we have two, um, two schedules, everyone got in their pocket. Jen, we have how many meetings on here?
Usually we do about, an average of three a month, except for, for ten months. We usually go meet in August and December. And as I explained to George before the meeting, we are always anxious to cancel a meeting if there's not enough business. But it's better to have folks set aside at least these evenings. We have taken great lengths to try to avoid school vacation weeks, holidays, you know, invariably we'll run into something. But that's why you see less meetings in April, more meetings in March, which is usually a busier month for the commission. And to try to avoid Election Day next year and Thanksgiving, we've kind of rearranged November a little bit.
So, I would entertain a motion to approve the scheduled meeting as proposed.
Jim Ryan.
I'll move. I say I'll move.
Thank you, second. Kara, all in favor?
I'm zero.
Okay. Next is the meeting schedule for the Aquafer Protection Agency.
Aquafer Protection Agency.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
This, sir.
How can we approve it, we don't even know who's on it?
Well, I'm gonna ask that question. I didn't know, I'm getting there.
And Daria and the Planning and Zoning Commission also serves as the Aquafer Protection Agency. It's a small area on the west, west part of town. It is an Aquafer. A few years ago, the state required that commissions serve in this role. The good news is there are very, very few applications. So, we only usually meet once a year. You can see it's gonna be in January, and again, after that, it will be as needed, so.
So, just for, just for clarification, this one should be at seven fifty-five? Or this one should be at eight oh five?
Yeah, we'll make the Aquafer Protection at seven fifty-five PM. It's likely to be canceled, I guess.
Right, you can't have two, six people can't get the same meeting at seven o'clock time.
So, we'll change that, make that, will that one change?
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the meeting schedule for the Aquafer Protection Agency?
I'll make that motion.
Well done.
I'm gonna sack it. All in favor?
I love it.
Well, okay, that's done. Next, um, we have some, the next item on the agenda, input of regarding committee values taken to the Board of Selectmen.
Wait, Fred just printed a redline version, I wasn't sure if we were done with this or not, but at least we'll circulate. I think we might have been, or really close. Just take a look at it, if it's good. As I, Fred had me look at it earlier today, I said, I think it's good to go, but we wanted to get a formal okay from you guys before we ship it off to the Board of Selectmen.
What we did is we took the, we took your comments from last week, incorporated those into the draft, and that's what you see here.
The only question that I have, and I don't know if it comes from Kara or where it comes from, what's the difference between bullet points and not bullet points? Are they all bullet points?
Make them all go.
How do you go from a bullet point to not a bullet point?
My, my take on that was the bullet points were, were subbed to the first paragraph. I may be incorrect.
I don't know, I, Jennifer started, I mean, I'm sorry, Kara started, it was, was there a?
I, there was.
There was no rammar reason, right, it was a cut and paste?
No, it was not a cut and paste, it was, um, I thought it was all bulleted, maybe the bulleting formatting, that's a guy.
So we can make them all bulleted?
Reverted to different, I use it in Mac, so got reverted to a word, and they might have lost formatting. There was no strategic.
The one one that I would.
Reason to bullets versus no bullets, but I'll look through more carefully. If things were sub bullets, um, I can verify that, but I don't think if things were sub bulleted.
The, the one, one that I have a little bit of passion about is consider innovative zoning revision where appropriate, so not following multifamily developments in appropriate zoning districts.
Where are you, Steve?
The one that's redlined to post off.
Bottom on page one, top of page two. I think that's something that under the next chairmanship or our next thing, that we try to address that.
Are you?
The one at, at the bottom of page one, that's completely redlined out, consider innovative zoning revisions.
Oh, yeah.
Where appropriate to allow for a rising variety of multifamily residential developments in appropriate zoning districts, while maintaining Daria as a primarily family, single-family residential town, allow for subdivisions and repurposing of underutilized buildings and/or properties. Meaning, a value should be that this board should be considering avenues in its planning and zoning.
Planning.
Purview to allow for development of multifamily land use, you know, while still keeping in mind, still primarily a single-family.
How did this get through, I'm gonna look at it, I feel strong.
Because, um, I think either Jennifer or someone took it out, and I knew they'd come back, so.
So we can add that back and recirculate.
We're gonna add that back, sure.
It's still a work in progress and.
The other one was review potential redevelop for higher uses, that's a, that's a real thing.
But I think the higher uses confuse everyone, so let's come up with better, more, more clear language of what higher use means, and recirculate.
This is what I would like to do.
Yep.
If we're good with this, we just, redline, redline, just make it black line and send it off as a draft to the Board of Selectmen. I don't think we need to beat this on ground.
We have to unredline certain things.
I think we can get it off our desk and out to their desk.
The only question I would have is on that, bottom of page one.
Yeah.
The word innovative, whether we took that word out.
Sure.
Okay. So what you're saying is, add that one back in.
The only thing I should do is plug.
Also clean up, uh, coordinate with the bullets.
Send it.
Ship it off.
Ship it off, as a, as a draft to the Board of Selectmen. I mean, now, I don't know what's, it's still.
Well, they're gonna take in whatever pieces they want anyways, this is just feedback.
Exactly. We don't need to beat this on the ground. Right, anybody disagree with that?
Is it gonna be rubbish out there?
Uh, next, um, application one, also site plan number three forty, eventually, and regreating application number four fifty, four fifty-four. Rosolo, one, Token Beach, request to modify a previously approved plan. Read, that's the one here from Glengate.
Correct.
Did the major thing that I know of and notice is that the spa was added.
Correct.
Pool equipment got moved to the left.
Correct, Brandon Jones is here to answer any questions. Basically, this, a plan was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, this property is next door to the Token Beach Club. The commission approved the rebuilding of the house, and the construction of a pool, and installation of associated pool equipment. It's not in the flood zone, but it's on a coastal property, so it was a coastal area management review by this commission. In this case, when they came in for the building permit for the pool, the plans that came in were a little different than what the commission approved.
So Dave Keating, whose job was to review the plans before he stamps them and says go, looked at what we approved, what they presented, and said they don't match.
They don't. Correct.
Go ahead.
The question is, uh, that, as Steve said, they've added a spa and relocated the pool equipment. The spa and the pool equipment need all the applicable zoning setbacks, they're pretty much right where, uh, the previous approval was. They're five to 10 feet closer to the water, still 170 feet from the water. And actually, as Brandon explained to me, and he explained in this letter, this revised plan has less regrading, because what they've done is slightly redesigned the patio landscaped area adjacent to the pool. And so this will actually have, uh, less regrading associated with it, less fill brought onto the property. And that part of the proposal, the retaining wall and the, I'll call it the elevated patio, has been pulled back by a few feet.
Let me ask you a question that doesn't show up here. Where is, has the lot coverage affected? I mean, I, I looked at the patio, to me, it looks like they added twenty by twenty-five inches, five hundred square feet. Is it anywhere close to lot coverage?
Not even close, it's a one acre property.
Okay, so it's not like the, uh, Token or Maroc Bay.
Right.
Where everyone's pushing.
Right, in this case, they're at like ten, seven or 10%, not even close. So the question for the commission is, do you have any questions for Brandon? Uh, if you find that this proposal will have no coastal impacts, and the regrading is actually better, better, you can just approve it as a minor amendment to the previously approved plan.
So, does that have any questions?
One easy question. I appreciate the, um, regrading benefit, I guess, in town. Any neighbor, have made, I guess, have neighbors been notified of this change?
Don't have to.
No, the neighbors were notified when the house proposal came through.
But doesn't lie.
The house proposal needed a variance from the zoning board appeals, they already had one hearing. The proposal came to P and Z for the pool, another hearing. The, now, the question is, which aspect of this needs P and Z approval? The coastal, does this spa, will the spa and the pool equipment being five feet closer to the water impact any coastal resources? This was an area, Brandon, that was previously shown as lawn.
Exactly.
So, uh, from this, from that standpoint, and this is, if you look at the property, it's pretty much dead in the middle of the property.
Okay, I agree. So, did you want to answer her question? Well, the neighbor, your question was, were neighbors?
Notified that, that a spa is gonna be where pool equipment had been with greenery around it, and now it's gonna be a spa. And pool equipment will be not with greenery around it.
No, pool equipment will essentially be relatively in the same place, I mean, we pushed it forward by a couple feet.
So Bonnie, this needs.
Could you introduce yourself?
I'm sorry, Brandon Jones, I'm the director of design for Glengate.
Thanks.
Hi, Miss Inbus.
Okay.
Did the pool com?
It's a spa now.
Uh, so, yeah, I mean, I said essentially, you're, you're right, you're, you're correct, it's not the exact.
That's why you're here.
You're exactly right, you're exactly right, and I apologize if I, if I, yeah, no, we did push it a little bit closer to, uh, yeah, to the sound. But again, it complies with all the setbacks.
I think one of Kara's point, I don't, we stick with what you meant, the old problem was screened, this new problem was not.
Yeah, just no, neighbors aren't being notified. How, will this impact them, will they be notified, has anyone talked to them?
I would.
If I can say that we, I mean, the, the Mancinis would be more than happy to do any sort of screening on that pool equipment, again, that, that has moved, I, I think essentially, maybe five feet, uh, in, in location. And I may be off on that exact footage, but, but it has moved a bit, but, but not, not a lot. And the Mancinis would be more than happy to supply ample screening to that pool equipment.
But isn't, Brandon, let me ask you this question. Is the pool equipment, uh, right next to it is a four-foot wall.
Exactly, yep.
So, wouldn't, it doesn't, because the pool equipment's not in the flood zone, you and I discussed that.
Exactly.
Then it could just be right on the ground.
It could shortcut.
And that four-foot wall would essentially block the top of it.
Um, actually, that, the, the four-foot wall wouldn't block the top of it from the neighbors if I'm, you know.
Doesn't block from the downhill side.
It blocks, right, exactly, it would block it.
From the uphill side.
Exactly, yeah. But again, if, if there were, needed to be, you know, approvals contingent on screening placed around that, that pool equipment, you'd be more than happy to, to, to do that.
Because Token Beach Club's here. So you can see from here, whereas you would not, right? It's a downhill side.
Uh, so essentially, Token Beach Club is located here.
I'm sorry, could you bring the microphone with you?
Absolutely.
Just bring it with you. We are mobile.
Oh, good. I don't know if I am, but.
Not on there.
So, Token Beach Club is to, uh, to the top of the page. Uh, the pool equipment is located kind of in the middle of the page. Uh, again, if this approval would be contingent on screening this pool equipment in any fashion, the Mancinis would be more than happy to do that.
And that's the only, like, that's the neighbor?
Uh, I'm sorry, so this is the Token Beach Beach Club. Um, there's a large screening, uh, proposal that's already in place to, to the bottom of the page, sorry.
And there's nobody, there's nobody to your, there's no.
To the bottom, there is a neighbor to the bottom.
There is a neighbor to the bottom, and this is a large everybody hutch that, that is being talked about and.
There's nobody to the east.
Exactly.
Just wrap, I would just recommend you wrap it in something, boxes or something.
Yep, absolutely. Certainly.
The only thing at Token Beach is their parking lot and tennis courts, isn't it?
Yes, exactly, yeah, which, which, in the grand scheme of things, this, this new resident will be more than eager to screen that.
Jen, any questions?
A comment, or maybe a question for Jeremy, because I don't remember, and I sat through this thing.
Right.
This was not particularly contentious application.
No, it wasn't.
I don't recall a lot of commentary from anybody.
I don't think the neighbor came to P and Z here.
Okay.
The one that did, but.
I, I'm good with that.
Here's the content.
I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good.
Okay. So you just screen it, that's great, we don't have to, we're not voting on this thing, we don't have to do it immediately.
You could just vote on, to approve the revised plan with the condition that the pool equipment be screened.
I would entertain a motion to approve the revised plan and include that the pool equipment gets screened.
Second.
Jeremy?
Second, all in favor?
Okay, great.
Good luck with the pool equipment. Move it on, next, um, amendment of business site plan number, uh, three twenty-one, parentheses two, the Gardner Center and Florist at thirteen ninety-six Post Road. Requesting sole and shade structure.
At this point, I will requeen this message.
Okay, before the walking tour. We approved a structure on this thing from these nice gentlemen, um, a year ago, right?
True.
Did they ever build that, or they didn't build?
No, Mr. Barker is here to explain where that stands and how this is different or the same.
Good evening, Chris Barker, the Gardner Center, thirteen ninety-six Post Road. So, you did approve that, thank you, and we did put it up, and now we have to move it. So it was, it, it, it did its job for the time being, but it's really not, it, our whole point was to try and establish a clear entrance and exit, because the customers have a really hard time sort of figuring out where to go. Um, that didn't really work, we're still gonna use it, we'd like to move it directly to the back of the greenhouse, so we don't waste all the money that we spent on it.
Is, is that shown up on here at all?
It is on page.
Where it says new, old?
Yes, new, old, so, old is where it is right now.
Okay.
We'd like to move that to where it says new, and then, we'd like to build.
This.
The, the larger structure that goes, I guess in place of where the old is, but it's much bigger and longer.
And to cut right to the chase, this is the best view of what we want to go.
Right, so, it's just like that. That is page four, uh, sorry, two.
Got it, thank you.
Yep. Um, what it is, is, it's, it's actually, so each one of those, those squares or rectangles right there are shade structures that are used in the Gardner Center industry quite frequently. This particular company is a very high-end one, and it's really, really quite cool, because you can connect them all together. Um, so it becomes an art, you know, kind of artistic aesthetic. So it's, it's heavy-duty steel, it wouldn't be red, it would be, it would be black, so it's a little bit more modern. And then you do a shade fabric, which, so that shade fabric is old, that's from our roof. So it wouldn't look like that, so just, I know that looks tattered and worn, it's a nice, it would look more like that, that you're looking at.
This is your spatch, right?
Yeah, so again, that's like an old piece that we had kind of laying around, so you had an idea of what it was, that water and light can go through it. Um, but it would be black metal and then a light gray fabric that would go on top, so it's permeable.
Okay, let me just interrupt you for a half a second, because Geiger's approval from the architecture review board.
Yep.
Says supposed to be rust, and it's gonna rust, it's gonna naturally rust.
Right, so we had talked about on the AR board, they had suggested be a different color, I was at that point kind of steadfast on let's go with the rustic red approach. Um, when we looked at the building again, we have a red on the building, and that rust would not match, like, even as time goes on, it would really kind of conflict with the red that's already on there. So we kind of thought it would be a better idea to go with that matte black, a little bit more modern approach.
I don't disagree, but I, whatever you guys want, whatever architectural review board says, I can, I really have a horse in my foot.
Yeah, um, I think that they would like it better if we have to ask them again, that's fine, maybe just with a, maybe a written letter, if that's okay. I have to place this order in early December in order to get it for spring, because they can manufacture it, so if we can do something like that, that would be fine.
This, this one picture you have in here with this, that's what this thing is at somebody else's place?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, that's what this thing is, and then the three D rendering is, is the other one that we showed.
Right.
And the way to get people in and out is, is the gabled section of the building.
Yep, so the gabled section is your entrance, and then just to the right of that would be the exit, which is ideally to funnel people directly into the front of the store where you would pay.
Got it, okay. Any questions from Jim Ryan?
I have none.
No, no, Kara, no, okay. Uh, is anyone in the audience like to speak to us? Same, no. I would motion to close the hearing, Abbott, albeit they have to go back to.
Well, I guess, in this case, general meeting item.
Oh, I see.
We can put them on for ARB for their meeting next week, for that one issue, and what you guys can do is tell us, yep, it's approved, subject to whatever ARB says.
That's what I would.
Is there any possible way I could do it in writing, and the only reason why I ask is I have to go, I have like a surgery tomorrow that I might be out of commission next week.
Out of commission, you're out of commission.
Huh? I know, I'm in commission, and, yeah.
Whatever, whatever.
So it's up, up to the commission, if you want to say, ARB looked at this, they said they prefer the rust. If you guys, they recommend to you, so the, you can either say, we're gonna approve it in black. Sorry, ARB, and you guys have the right to do that, or you could say, we're gonna approve it, ARB, you make the final decision on the color.
I, I, reading their letter, it doesn't say that they, that they want it. It's page three, that they want it rustic, that.
Right, that's what Chris proposed, and so we'll share, we did it back to what Chris proposed.
Correct, the other, it said, the board suggests extending the height, give it two feet to create that, that's what they suggested, a more dramatic entrance. That's fine, if he does that, it's great.
They, they were, they, they preferred black for any, any incorporation of black, they thought it would be a more dramatic appearance.
Most they want.
Which I agree.
If you guys want to approve it as black, that's fine, perfectly acceptable.
Yes, we're allowed to overrule ARB. Okay, let's overrule ARB.
We gotta overrule it.
Right, what Chris said is I changed my, changing minds from rust to black.
That's not going against their optimism.
Right, so if you guys want to approve it.
As black. Andy, does it have to go back to ARB?
Right.
Okay, that's fine. Is anybody good with that? Okay, I entertain a motion to approve this, and if he wants to make it black, he's more than welcome to.
Jim, where are you, Jeremy?
Uh, my turn to make, I'll make the one.
There you go, okay, a second. There you go.
Okay.
Great.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Good night.
I follow up with building permits, right? Everyone, am I good?
Yeah, we'll send you a letter.
Okay.
This week, um, but you will need, uh, zoning building permits for, for the structure.
And get your order in.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Get your order.
Good night, everyone.
Okay.
Okay, uh, next, we have a couple of extension requests, um, extension of time. Um, I'm just gonna spit about all at the same time, do I have to read everything?
No.
Okay, one is the Runway Chopping Center, two is twenty-five Brookside, which was a case that was litigated, three is Fifteenth Lady, which is down in Maroc Bay. The first one, we already gave, this is Runway Chopping Center, which is the Palmer's project, we gave them one extension already?
We did, and I do not believe, um, well, let me rephrase that. They are moving along, this is a much bigger project than a typical P and Z project, obviously. They have been moving along, their demo permits are in the building department, they're proceeding with demolition. Uh, as part of that, you have to do a number of items. Fred and I spoke to the building department secretary today, who updated us and said, yep, they're, they're doing their due diligence in getting that moved along. Bob Maslin spoke to me earlier today and outlined what's in his letter before you did in November eighth, which says that they expect to start abatement very soon. And thus, they will probably start pulling building permits, if not in December, my guess would be, oh, January.
Pretty close, yeah. Well, as far as demolition?
Our definition of starting is, is commencement of demo or commencement of after demo?
I would say commencement, in this case of demolition, because demolition here is not a, you know, one-day thing, this could, wow. So I would say, once they're starting the demolition, they're well underway.
Okay, okay.
Sir, would you like to speak?
Just if I might, Robert Maslin, you, no need. Welcome to the new members.
Thank you, sir.
The, uh, the significant date here is the deadline by which demolition permits have to be issued. That's the way it's written up in the, in the approval. Uh, we submitted, uh, an, an extension request by email some time ago, knowing that October twenty-third is gonna come and go, or we're making our way toward that demolition permit deadline. And in order to have you get a good status, I wrote this letter the other day, November third, that summarizes the status of everything.
November eighth, November third?
Uh, November eighth, I'm sorry. Um, and then, so, this gives you the status, what's not in here is the financing closing is imminent. I say imminent, because last week they were talking about closing today, but it's not today, it might be within the next few days. It's a, as you can imagine, a pretty significant undertaking. There are three tenants left in these buildings, and they're in the process of, of having them vacate. Uh, there's relative, there are relevant spaces.
Who's the third?
We're not quite sure when that, when that all is gonna occur. One is Jimmy's, one is Glenn Liquors, and I chose the other one.
I thought there were only two.
The other, I think it's, we made it down to two now.
Well, you've already applied for the building permit, because there's a sign on the outside.
Files are open over there, and it's, it's a matter of, now, what we have to do now.
It's been in the papers already?
Yep, lead, the lead abatement.
I understand.
You know, lead paint, the asbestos, and there may be some contaminated soil. Uh, one of the spaces was a dry cleaner at one point, so there may be some things that need to be done before you can actually go to lease at the building and department and say, please hand me the permit so I can go demolish.
So how many, how many days, how much more time do you want?
I asked for, at the end.
Six months.
Six months to cover, it may sound like a long time, but the buildings are almost completely empty. Remediation is gonna take a little time, coordination with the utilities, disconnecting, everything is gonna take a little time.
And you can, you can demo the building where the dry cleaner is going older down to, uh, at Tunix, and then there's an infection.
Building by building, and, and I think, really, to meet the deadline, we just need one demo permit for one of the buildings, and we're good.
Better, you're good.
Well, to the chairman's point, I did wanna ask for a little clarification, you indicate that you were going to begin the process at the corner of Hollow Tree and Heights.
It happens to be Glenn Liquors. But they're being, they're in the process, I think the one that's gonna take a little longer to vacate is Jimmy's.
Because it's a free state of building.
It's litigation.
Yep. So, you know, we're, our plan is to start there and then just work around wherever the.
The demo permits on the other side, though, I don't know if that matters.
Well, the three files. Well, the three files are open. She, Lisa at the building department opened files.
Right.
And that's so that there's a process. You have to get the paperwork, do your postings, and all that stuff.
That's a good one. Anybody have a problem with six months?
Can I just mention two things, Steve? One is sequencing. I have a paragraph in here about sequencing. It's basically one continuous operation, so there's really no sequencing per se. Usually you think of sequencing as we'll build, building one this year and building two next year. It's not gonna be like that, it's just one continuous. And then the other thing I'd like you to do is authorize Jeremy to sign the last page of my letter, accepting and approving my status report.
Why is he up to, why is he up to that?
Financing.
That's our book.
Just to have the.
That's fine.
Thank you very much.
Wait, we're saying it's fine, right?
Go ahead, Kara.
Approves the update and sec, like a sequencing.
Jeremy's just signing off on this, so when they put it through the bank, they know things fully. But the resolution is still out there. The resolution's probably in the financing practice, is my guess. But the resolution's got an expiration date on it. They're gonna say this is expired. So if they have this piece of paper that's behind the resolution, they say, oh, okay.
No, I understand all that, but I wonder if the verbiage could be one hundred percent.
The issue on phasing, if that's your question, is the original approval said submit a phasing plan. When we asked for the extension the last time, we kind of changed that and said, well, we're going into one fell swoop. Well, then along comes these people that wanna know.
Right.
And we have to satisfy them that we've complied with that requirement. And that's really my point in having Jeremy sign on. It doesn't change anything about the approval.
The phasing was all one fell swoop.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would add to patient, entertain a motion for to approve this request of six months' extension and also at the same time allow Jeremy to sign this letter. George?
Sure.
So moves.
Spread it around.
Larry, you wanna be a second?
I'll second. All right, I jumped in on.
I just wanna get to that.
All those in favor, say aye. Thank you. Good luck, Rob. Sounds like Jeremy.
Yep.
Number two on here is 25 Brookside, request for addition, permits for work. What's going on here? This is the, this is the case that we settled.
The commission settled this case. We have been working with Bob and John Luizos on finalizing. There's an easement map, a map which shows where the house is gonna go. There's easement documents. I spoke to John earlier this evening. I've looked at the easement documents. Rich Jacobson, on behalf of EPC, has looked at the documents. John has briefly looked at them. He seems okay. We expect that this will be all settled within a week or so. I personally don't think this needs an extension of time. Bob has requested one. I think that because this is really a settlement of litigation, that we can take as long as we want because it's in litigation. And the fact that the settlement is imminent, I think Bob agrees with me here, but.
It's not out of litigation yet? The papers just said.
Well, it's settlement, but the final papers have not been filed in the land records. That's what we're literally proofing. I think John's probably gonna do it, what'd he say, tomorrow?
He said tomorrow, yeah.
So the clock basically stops, right?
It stops when it's in litigation.
Yeah.
Yep.
So why do we have to extend this?
Mr. Maslin, can you speak?
Robert Maslin again for. Belts and suspenders? That's all, it's just, in a way, reporting, we're reporting to you what the status of this is.
Thanks.
The map's not recorded on the land records yet and, you know, we're, but it's not like we've been sitting on this. It's been a continuous process. We had to move around a few things on the site plan as you, as you hold hats. So the commission knows that this is a fairly complicated site plan.
How much time?
I don't, well, nothing specific, right, Jeremy? I mean.
Oh, me?
No, you asked for six months.
Thirty days, let's do thirty days.
So, well.
Thank you.
We have a motion right here. Would you have a second?
I thought I heard a second.
All those in favor?
Okay, four to zero, Bob.
Thirty days more. Next. 15 Wayberry. We approve fifteen, Wayberry was approved by the commission. How many years ago?
At least.
Couple of years.
At least three or four.
And they've had.
They, they were in litigation for quite a while with the contractor. They had a number of problems with contractors here. You may have seen, I sent you an email earlier today on that. The owner, and Phil did a little bit on some of the situations they've had with contractor. I don't wanna speak for the owner, but I think it's kind of left a bad taste in their mouth in terms of getting their house built, constructed, and moved in. And I think that's what they're trying to figure out is. They said, does things have a construction now? Well, no, the foundation's been sitting there for a while. It was, they had a problem with the construction of the foundation.
Okay.
And so that held them up because it wasn't done right. And so there were some disputes that had to be resolved. And that's what they say here, due to unforeseen circumstances. The foundation has been suspended.
Okay, that I missed, I'm sorry. I never voted yes for this thing in my career, but now they started it, so. I would let you guys do whatever you want. How much more time do they want, six months?
They don't specify in their liar or time.
It's gonna go on, need a couple more years.
Our big, our big thing, from what I remember, the commission's big thing was, is really the site plan and recreating application. That's what it's all about.
A house that's in the flood zone, it's in Noronton Bay. There was some regrading associated with it. And, you know, these small lots in Noronton Bay, gotta get the house in terms of meaning with setbacks horizontally, but also making sure it's high enough according to flood regulations. So, and it has to be designed just right. And that's was the holdup with the foundation is it wasn't built exactly pursuant to the plans. So they've had to go back and forth, put the whole thing on hold. And now they've kind of taken a break to figure out, do we wanna sell it? Or do we wanna move in ourselves? And either way, whoever ends up with it has to then build the house.
Great, I bet you it gets regraded again, but anyway. How much time do they want, gentlemen?
I would say if you give them a year.
A year?
A year.
Six, eight months?
What is that? What is, what was the approval?
The last approval was six months. The last extension was six months.
Now, the original approval gave them two years to commence or to finish?
It's two years to commence, and then they got a one-year extension.
And then we give another year, they got eleven and a half months to, whatever we give them to commence, not to finish.
They already commenced.
They already commenced. So it says, what they're asking for is additional time to complete the required work.
They're not even.
And it's in dormant. So the required work is what, the foundation?
Build the house. And do the regrading. Regrading part of the application.
And which also includes submitting an as-built survey.
Right.
And you gotta give them a year because you can't build the house.
You can't build a house in six months.
Can't build one in six months.
Especially since they're probably not gonna get started till March, would be my guess.
This would be a fourth extension granted by the commission.
They supported the fifth.
This is a fourth.
So it was, it was, they got two, they got two years, right?
This can't be a precedent.
I believe the original approval was for two years.
Right, so they got two years, then they got a one-year extension. Then they got another one-year extension?
Right, my understanding is for part of those extensions, they were in litigation with the contractor.
Okay, so then they got a six-months extension. So that's two years, three years, four years, four and a half years, right? And now they need more time again? But I never voted for it at the beginning in the first place, so you guys could.
If we, if we tell them no, what are they gonna do?
They're gonna come in here with the exact same application.
With a new application.
You'll see, you'll see them in January standing at the podium asking for a permit to build the house.
Let's give them a year.
Yeah, I, I would say give them a year.
George?
A second now.
Okay.
I'd say actually a third.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I'm entertaining motion to, it's said for another year. I didn't know that the foundation was already there. Right, looking for a motion and a second.
Motion.
There's the motion.
Second.
I think five person.
Okay, five to zero.
Five to zero. Okay, that's fine. Good. Next, special, special permit application, number 309, Groob's Pharmacy. 1021, Boston Post Road, posted install the four-seat coffee counter for personal goods. We have a draft resolution in our files, which is pretty straightforward. It is about two and a half pages, which I think is short as Jeremy and Fred.
Uh, that's four pages.
Oh, yeah, it's two loosely pieced together. Did anybody see any typos, scripters, errors, any major questions?
Larry, I wasn't sure, you, were you able to?
I've watched the, I watched the tapes of the meeting for all of these.
Oh, great, okay.
Thank you, demand.
Great.
Okay, intiation of motion to approve as submitted.
I move to this draft, the approved as submitted.
Wait for a second.
Thanks.
All those in favor?
Five to zero, it's ready.
Yay, thanks.
Next.
The other question, other?
This is site plan application, 146F as a trank, special permit for dynamic athletics. 1339, 3119, 319, Boston Post Road, posted clear of finished space in the basement for use of personal training. This was another straightforward one. The guys from the get-go always wanted to allow people in the basement. There was no, no questions or comments on it. This is another nice short one. Did anybody pick up any typos, questions, comments? Typos, if you have typos or scripters, pass them in. Um, pretty straightforward, there's no neighbor questions.
It was approved, it was supportive of it.
Yes, I wanted it. Intiation.
So I'm one of their neighbors.
Yes, you are. You're a Park Road guy, right?
You know, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with, with the additional training downstairs, but I don't think it's in our purview because your, in your last discussion, did talk about the fact that they, people are allowed to exercise outside go for runs and things like that. These guys have a habit of just sort of releasing all their clients at once down the street. It's like a road race started sometimes. Yeah, so all of a sudden, I mean, I don't think personal training's gonna impact that at all.
No.
But sometimes you're just trying to drive down the street and there's.
Class let out?
The, the rowing class all went, you know, unless they all randomly decide to go running at the exact same time in the exact same place, you know?
At least one dude needed, probably.
Yeah, so, you know, but it's, it's been a property that's always been empty because the restaurants can't just make it work, so I'm, I'm actually very glad it's, it's, it's getting a good use. But I just wanted to get that comment in there.
The one comment I would, to, I think answer your comment, I think the one thing that we did at the very beginning when this thing was approved is some of these things like vibe and even the ones underneath Palmer's, they've got that big rubber tire in the parking lot and can work outside flipping tires.
Right.
We never allowed that at this one. Okay. Probably if, you know, someone wants to walk out and run a birch and go past your house, it's gonna run a bit.
Yeah, I know.
I don't think the same thing the other residents.
Forty of them do it at the same time? It just happens. It's a great coincidence.
So I think we're on the same page and.
I'm really on the same page.
Intiation to approve as submitted.
Someone.
You got a motion? Second? All those in favor?
It has written.
All right, I'm all confused about this one. Did you move?
No, George, George motion.
Thank you kindly, gentlemen.
George was the pusher, he was second.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, next, we're on page two. Amendment based on site plan approval, number 162, special permit to Everwell, 1901 County South, posted create open air space, rooftop deck utilized in ceiling for the members of Everwell for co-working, space to small sets of going. This is a little bit of a precedent one, because we've never approved these things before.
We were given ass?
Nope.
No, we're been asked, yeah.
There's some as's in the bay that have these things that they have. This is actually even shorter.
I think they have a well-designed plan with the furniture and the, you know, lack of outlets and lighting, right, that will, you know, keep the people using it limited to what they're, you know, permitted to allow out there. It's all, you know, not every tenant can use it.
Sorry, George.
Only those who are members of the Everwell, so I think they kind of contemplated those issues. It won't increase parking or traffic. I think it's a well-measured and well-controlled precedent for this kind of thing which is happening in Norwalk and Stamford, maybe not as well-controlled. So that's my commentary, not the authority's commentary. But I think, you know, it is a good example of how we can incorporate this in the town in a kind of well-controlled way that, you know, has safety, number of people, intensity of usage, not increasing traffic, you know, in mind.
The adjective innovative springs to mind.
You guys crossed it out, somebody crossed it out. Really, Karen did that, you guys mixed it. Question, I don't, I don't see it in here, but it doesn't say anything about the number of occupants as per the fire perspective.
It does not. That's more of a building code issue as opposed to planning zoning, approving the number of occupants for the space. They did note that the deck would have a maximum occupancy of seven individuals, based on the building code.
Can I just ask a question, but I'll take it later. Who is the enforcement of that? If someone sees, if George is in a building and sees ten people sitting out there, who's George calling? Police Department?
Building official.
Building.
My zoning commission badge?
Well, I see it is. I, I don't wanna put it on you guys or Dave Keating.
No, it would be the building official that enforces that. They'll figure out what, what the requirement is and then they'll, their job is to enforce it.
We don't need to put their rules inside our resolutions.
That's correct.
The rules and regulations.
Oh, they got books and rules.
Okay. With that said. I would maintain a motion to approve as submitted. Right, there you go. Uh, second, George, second, all in favor? All, dodge nothing. Uh, next. In the hearing application, number 463, Trisha Lager, nature, sorry. 10 Spring Grove Street, proposed to the Property Association with expansion of existing rain garden. Enclosed two new retaining walls on the property and formulated several of the activities. This is the house that is on a private street on a corner. It's a huge hill in the back. It floods thunder neighbors. She has a good engineer and a good bunch of stuff on site. I just hope that, when it goes from us to the building department, I have to look at the plan, Jerry?
In this case, we did, Fred and I spoke with Pete Solheim, the building official, who said that the way the walls here are designed, she will need a zoning and building permit. So right before this went into your packets, we added basically the last sentence on the last page and condition after, the proposed walls will require a zoning and building permit, and this permit shall be submitted prior to the start of any work.
So that's the wall side, the engineers, what exactly.
They're engineered walls, and so Pete said, they need the zoning building permit.
They'll hold back a lot of stuff. We run into that stuff a lot. Sometimes we put in, make them engineer walls in advance if they're five, four feet, one inch. I forget what these are, but this is holding back. I forget what these are, but this is holding back.
Here, here was, it was the fact that it's holding back a lot of stuff.
The walls are probably pretty short, though, right?
He said it, they need the permit not because they're four feet or more, but the nature of, of the structural aspect.
That's the loophole in the thing. Um, any questions, comments, um, typos, errors, anything?
I had nothing. There were two neighbors who spoke, not one.
Two, who spoke in favor?
The one behind.
Number one.
The one behind, it's behind, at the top of the hill.
Yeah, I remember there being two.
And I think somebody on the street said that this one.
Someone down the water said it would help them as well.
And that's, that's second?
Yep. Um, I would make an, entertain a motion to approve. I think that was, um, Larry.
I'll make that motion, yeah.
And I think Kara, second?
Second.
All's in favor? Okay, thanks, Larry.
Yeah, my pleasure. This is all right.
Next, landfill regu, application, uh, number four sixty-one, Lisa Austin Pierceall, uh, four thirty-one Hoyt Street, propose to regrade property association with conservation, construction and addition of existing residents, addition of expansion of reconfined driveway, retaining walls, formulated site development activities. This is the house that's directly across the street from the Woodway Palatence Complex. Um, it's a circular driveway now, and they're gonna keep the circular driveway in place, which is grandfathered, lock down what's there, build a new.
Two-car garage?
A three-car garage.
Three-car garage.
Three-car garage, yeah, I think the guy, I think Mr. Pierceall collects cars or something. I think that's something he collects. So again, this is another wall that's seven feet high on one side, which is gonna be to the left of the house. Uh, there's some walls in the back that are pretty significant, holding back the railroad tracks.
No.
That's what I'm wondering.
And then J, K.
Um, I bet Jen Nickle, these things are gonna have to, building, yeah, building, building department.
Yeah, the building, uh, the zoning and building permit for this project is actually in our office, so we'll include the plans for the walls and all that and ship them over to building. So it'll be all-inclusive, the garage, uh, the regrading, the walls, all one permit and get shit through.
I just get real sensitive with engineering laws. Anybody catch any typos or anything?
Just very minor changes here. Follow, following condition H, it starts with four and then proceeds five, six. It should be I, J, K, so that will be corrected.
Wait, where it was?
Top of pages.
When you go, after you start resolving?
Oh, four should be I, I, J, K.
And then, uh, condition G, zoning compliance will be changed to, uh, certificate of occupancy.
Yep. Do we want a, uh, as-built survey on this one?
It's up to you. If I recall, the garage is not too close to the setbacks. So, uh, certainly we've asked for the structural engineer certification and a professional engineer on the drainage and, uh, the grading. Do you want as-built for the new garage?
I'm more concerned about the, the seven-foot-high wall.
The, the location of it or the, uh?
I guess the as-built's just gonna do it.
Because we need the structural engineer signing off that that was, it's gonna be okay.
Okay. Don't think the as-built survey's gonna say if it's in the setbacks, out of the setbacks, and the building where it is. Okay, that's fine. Anybody else have a comment on that?
On the as-built?
Yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll have a teaching moment about that sometime.
Exactly.
Okay.
Want it all to be removed from the lawn area between the curb paths?
Uh, between the.
There was that bush.
It's a bush.
You wanted that out?
Between the two curb paths, yes.
Okay.
They, I asked them to do it. They said they were relocating anyway.
Okay.
I said remove it and cut, chop it down, they said, oh, we're relocating.
Okay, this line, that's consistent with.
It's in here?
Yeah, it is number C.
I see it.
There's a, there's a green bush in the picture and today it's red. It blocks this, this site view. Um, so that's in there. Um, anything, any other question for anybody? So, intention of motion to approve as, um, entered by, um, Fred.
Do you still move?
I think it's seconded by George. All's in favor? Okay. Uh, X. Landfilling, landfilling excavation and regrading application, uh, number four sixty-seven, Scott and Chris in Paluso, ten Homewood Lane, propose to regrade areas of the property association with construction of new driveway that was twenty-five feet from the residence, now in construction from the site to the basement. This is the driveway that was now a circular driveway, it's part of a share from the front door.
It's the one that's shared with the neighbor next door or something.
But not really shared.
Number twelve, the guy who, the guy who came in as a neighbor of number twelve.
Which nowhere is driveway.
One's on the travel.
We don't have to get into that. Well, Fred and I discussed that, and we said, you know what, let's, let's leave it out because it's not really too relevant to, you know, his concern was when did the, where did the driveway join construction?
His only, his only concern was, hey, it's, it's helpful now that I have it there, and I just want to know when it's gonna be gone. And we'll figure out what to do once it's gone. And it's all.
Yeah, it's number four.
And you noted in the record that he came and asked what he discussed.
Yep.
Like, it's not really, as Mr. Royal pointed out, it's not really relevant to.
And he stated he didn't have an objection, he just wanted to know. He just wanted information.
Is his, is that guy's address Homewood Lane?
Yes, he's number eleven, I believe.
That's a twelve.
Nope, it's ten.
Well, this is the one behind her.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was reading it here, um, here.
Okay. Okay. Um, I would entertain a motion to approve as submitted. Um, Kara?
Okay.
Seconded by Larry.
Sure.
All's in favor?
Thank you. None?
Still five, nothing. Uh, next, landfill regu, application number two ninety A, um, John Nielsen, fifty-one Allen Way, proposes to regrade the southern portion of property, so due to more management in Florida, they had searched on their crews. This is the guy with the sign on that was not black enough for him, or was scared to play lacrosse. Love that, you do love that.
That's all that had to be said. I don't think she's gonna mention this.
I, I mentioned it three times, the other kid was on my lacrosse team, but you said no backyard.
I think it's important that we maintain our lacrosse excellence.
I am not gonna motion or second any of this.
Bonnie's looking over there going, what? This was, it was, this was a little bit odd, where the guy that proposed it, I don't know if he's an engineer or not.
He's not.
And then he got it signed off by the best engineer.
Correct.
Yeah, which is a little different than usually taken care of, but it's a. Still works.
It still works, it's more of a landscape architecture type project.
Right.
But the amount of fill and its location required, review and actualize by the condition.
Does it say in here that those pipes are gonna drain to the left versus the right?
No, it does not.
Does it need to? It's on the plan, though.
It's on the plans, and the plans are incorporated into the motion, into resolution, aren't they?
Yes, that would be condition A.
Yeah.
And if they want to amend those plans and move the pipes to the right, to the right, not to the left, then.
You have to make sure the pipes are put in.
They would need to, wouldn't they need to get approval to amend?
You're, you're referring to the, the slope or the pitch of, of the, of the underdrains, essentially.
Yes.
It goes the opposite way, the hill, the hill goes like this, and the.
Yes.
Right. The plans show the, show the elevations of the, the, the ground elevations, but nothing is shown on the plans with respect to the actual underdrains beneath the, if you'd like, we can add some language in there that would.
I would add that in.
I think that's important.
Yeah.
Because otherwise it could be draining on.
If you make some level, it's still wrong. They're supposed to be lifted to drain all the water.
Keep the one out of the neighbor's yard, wait, take it back.
The guy was there and asked the files.
Yeah, that was.
Right. He provided testimony at the public hearing that the, the underdrains would be sloped towards the toe of the slope.
Precisely.
Yes.
And that's not in the plans. It, it's in the plans and the plans are incorporated by reference.
That's covered. He noted the series of storm drains would be installed along the toe of the slope, which would allow stormwater to infiltrate into surrounding soils instead of flowing overland towards the adjoining residential properties.
Right.
Two, Richard?
Yep, is that good enough for you guys?
Oh, at the public hearing, yeah.
I think so.
Do we need it now resolved for that trip?
I guess my question would be, if they amend the plans, do they have to come back? Because it's not in the plans, in the, right, so it's in the, right.
Testimony.
And it's being incorp, it's in the resolution. So if his testimony is improved, is incorporated into the resolution, which is unapproved, but not in the plans, if they want to change that, do they have to come back and get approval?
Yes.
Okay, as long as, that's fine.
We got two lawyers here that we don't have to pay.
Yeah, I, no, but I.
You get what you pay.
It says what he said.
I believe the commission's findings are sufficient.
Okay, so that's, in effect, that's an undertaking.
Yes.
A condition of our group, okay.
And Jeremy said it has to be approved if he wants to change that, so that's fine for me.
What, what Fred just says.
You shouldn't unify us.
That the commission's, the commission's findings are, are satisfactory to the zoning enforcement office.
Yes.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve this, um, resolution as submitted. Jim, thank you.
I'll second.
Kara, is it, are you not getting a second because it's lacrosse?
I would approve it.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah.
On the roll.
Maintain our balance.
We're done with resolution, now we're up to minutes, October minutes. We have three series of minutes, October first, October thirtieth, and October third. Just so you guys know, the big people on the board, the reason why the first one, which is October first, is so fat, is because all the, um, all the resolutions are already in here. And if you did find a typo in the resolution, you can't change it anyway. Because it's already in the resolution. Um, you can go back and change a resolution, then I think it wouldn't pay the lawyer's price. One of our current commissioners is two of the time. He would never allow it. Art, it's not really jumped out at me.
I had no comments.
No. And if you did have typos or scripters, errors, in fact, today, tomorrow, the next day, you guys just submit them there, you know, and then to, um, to, um, the office. Um, let's go one at a time, if you mind. October first, wish to approve as submitted. Approved. Approved, seconded by Larry.
Well, I don't think I can vote on any of these things on here.
Can I get a seconded? Can I get a seconded?
Start getting seconded, all's in favor?
Four to zero, Mr. Royal looks abstaining.
Okay, next, October thirtieth. First public hearing with the nature center. Which will happen two hours.
This is great video.
Yeah. Imagine, that's gonna be sweating. Groob's Pharmacy, we talked about that, that's pretty simple. Just saw the stuff that we approved tonight. Let me see. I don't see anything in here either. I would entertain a motion to approve as submitted, from Kara.
Yeah.
Seconded by Jim. All's in favor?
Five to zero.
Uh, last one, November fifth, which was election day. Um, I guess we started to leave, sorry, you know, five. Ruth Geiger gave the presentation at the beginning. Her document is in the files. Um, which I think is a nice presentation. We just want to have a committee that, that we, that we deliberate all the, um, items that we've brought around tonight. Jeremy gave us an update of the three, four major projects in town. Those are my notes. Uh, there you go, other business, those are true. Um, motion to, look before motion to approve as submitted. That's from George, second, from Jim, all's in favor? Four to nothing?
Yeah. I thought that, by the way, the summary, I thought of the village district presentation was good.
But, but, so that's.
Was quite accurate, I, I thought the summary of the village district, um, presentation was well done.
Okay. We're, we're down with this, but ask, is this typed up by you guys or is it typed up by?
Uh, Fred does mostly typing at the minute.
So yours is just a record that's, sits in some drawer?
Well, you don't have to get personal.
It's gonna lock to the video tape. Uh, that's my first flaw, Jim, maybe I do get voted out next week. Okay, project status update.
Uh, nothing new since, uh, last week.
Okay, that's good. Calendar update.
Now, our next meeting is next Tuesday, the nineteenth, I think we'll be in this room. Uh, it's mostly a public hearing night, a pretty full public hearing night. And then after that, we'll have to make a decision whether the commission wants to add an extra meeting to deliberate and possibly decide some of those, or not meet again until January.
I wasn't paying attention, I'm sorry.
After the meeting next Tuesday, the nineteenth of November, uh, full public hearing night. The commission will need to make a decision whether you meet again in late November or early December to deliberate and decide some of the more routine matters, or just sit on everything till January. We don't have to decide that now.
Okay. I would recommend we clip the ducks in January. So whatever.
The commission will also continue the nature center hearing on the nineteenth,